What's going on, Chums? John John the Wise is here and you are listening to Night City Council. And I am here with none other than the balance, the balance, the mayor of Balance Town himself, James Hutt. How are you, James?
I'm doing great. And I'm joined here today by the wise John, John.
The jaunest of all Johns.
Jaunest of all Johns. John, John and Wise.
Uh, James, I missed.
Good to see you again. It's, we missed a month.
Dude, we missed the month.
We have to tell them we missed it.
I'm so sorry.
Like we didn't.
But listen, it took us a month to get a nice microphone and webcam. So I know that all of you out there are gonna enjoy that. So yeah, we're back. James was on vacation, then he came back and then things were busy and we finally got the day down. We're here, we're recording Night City Council, so we do apologize for the delay. But James, before we get into your trip to Paris and Origins and the two DLCs that we're gonna talk about today, you've got something to tell us about James Hutt Games, don't you?
All right, all right. So yes, quickly before all the video viewers click off the video, uh, the James Hutt Games update is, uh, Sugar Worm Village, an upcoming horror game, our first game out of James Hutt Games is, uh, almost feature complete. And, uh, you gotta join the newsletter at jameshuttgames.com, uh, so that you can playtest it. If you wanna playtest it, you get your name in the book. Hey, wouldn't that be fun? Anyway, uh, that's the update there and, uh, exciting announcements in there, you know, we signed paper with an artist. That's fantastic. And you'll learn all about it in the newsletter. That's all we're talking about that here today.
That's right. And you can sign up to that news. You could sign up to that newsletter by going to James T. Hut.
No, no, no.
No, James Hut.
James Hut Games.com.
James Hut Games.com. Sign up for that newsletter and you will be updated on all the cool new stuff that James is doing.
Yeah.
There it is. Indie stuff.
We have tons of other things to talk about.
Yeah, we really do.
So let's get to that. Let's really get.
Get to it. First of all, you went to Paris, uh, right? It was Paris, right?
Yeah, I did Paris. Uh, it was a two week trip. It was real nice. Um, first time for a lot of things. I've gone to Paris before, but this is the first time going alone. This is a different kind of vibe.
Isn't it like a hell on earth over there right now?
I let, as soon as I left, all of this unrest kicked off and I don't know who started any of that.
Oh, I want, what a coincidence, huh?
I mean, it's almost like they needed help organizing something that they couldn't get it done. No, no, no. Um, yeah, it, I'm glad I left.
Yeah, it sounds, it looks pretty dangerous for real. It looks like pretty wild out there.
Uh, well, they, they know how to do unrest over there.
Yeah, yeah, it's in their history.
Indeed.
Yeah, but.
Their revolution is a part of their history as much as it is a part of ours.
Exactly, you know.
We're not so different.
We've all been there. So what was it like being to Paris? First of all, what was it? Did you do any work? Did you separate work? Were you like, what, did you play any games? What did you do?
Okay, so I, um, I sort of used the time to try some new stuff and whatnot. And I, I, I wanted to do my favorite things while I was there. So I did do some of the, um, some narrative design for, uh, indie stuff. Cause you know, it's a vacation from my job. So I wanted to work on me things. So I did write about some stuff that hopefully will see the light of day, uh, a couple of years into the future. But, uh, you know, it's exciting because Sugar Worm is almost done. We're really just doing tweaks at the end of it right now. So I have all of this narrative indie stuff I wanna get to after that. So I got to, you know, sprinkle the seeds of, of the first bit of the next thing, which was great. But no, I spent most of the time in museums and looking at awesome crazy stuff. Like they have, uh, um, they have this museum that has like real skeletons, a bunch of real skeletons of like every animal you could think of, all in one room in a giant diorama.
That's pretty cool, dude.
That was wild. That was wild. And you go to, and you see those kinds of things.
Is it like the body exhibit basically, like, kind of like that?
It's totally different. Um, because there are, um, cause it's like an antelope skeleton standing next to a deer, standing next to a, standing next to a horse and just right next to each other. And it's, uh, you know, it's, it's a very unique thing. I, um, I have a TikTok, but I'm not ever gonna post there ever again. And, uh, there is a video on there about it. I tried it out. I tried it out. Okay. I need to know what the kids are doing in order to properly.
Honestly, it's, it's addicting, dude. Once you get your algorithm set and TikTok knows what you like, they're good at showing you things that you like, dude.
I, I don't like watching TikToks. I think I only like making TikToks and that's just because I like making things in general and I can make other things.
Well, look, we're, all of us in the community are waiting for you to show us your dance moves on TikTok. So if you got that line now.
There will be no, there will be no dancing.
Uh, well, you know, we can all dream and try to, try to look forward.
I am a bard, not a jester.
I'm a bard.
There will be no dancing.
Oh, that's good. So, um, did you play any tabletop games with people? Did you meet, uh, any stuff like that? Any fans?
I, I really tried to find our product in France.
Oh, really?
Just to, just to say, I wanted to see one in the wild, like go on safari, try to find a copy of Cyberpunk Red in the wild.
In French?
Nope.
Well, it could because.
Barely any roleplay actually though. Um, just a lot of card, card shops and board game shops. I think it's a, it's less of a, it's a less of a, it's a smaller niche there, I think.
That's interesting.
And that's, that's to be, that, I mean, that's understandable. Different countries have different hobbies and niches and.
Markets.
What's big here might be smaller there. And I mean, I live in Seattle, Washington, next to Wizards of the Coast. Of course it's gonna be bigger here than it is over there.
Yeah, Italy has, Italia has a giant Warhammer scene, like giant, gigantic, like there's statues and stuff and like some shops and stuff like that. I think they're into the whole Roman, Greco-Roman thing, you know, that probably is a good way into Italy.
Hey, I mean, fair enough.
Yeah, so it is everywhere has its own little thing, but you know what? It's a worldwide global phenomenon is what's going on with cyberpunk, with Warhammer and all that.
Yeah, I saw, I saw some posters, but I wasn't able to sign any copies. That's what I was looking for. Oh, well.
Yeah. Well, my local shop was out of the core rulebook for a long time. Uh, it, it just like, I think he has one left right now.
Here, if you're a local shop, we do direct sales. Go to our website.
I think we've talked about this.
Make sure, we'll make sure we get it to you.
I know, we've talked, we've talked about this.
In case you're listening.
The thing is these local shops, they wanna work with their, the guys that they know. Like, you know, he goes through Alliance. Alliance is terrible with shipping, but he's like, but I know the guy. Allegedly, allegedly.
Speak no ill.
That was just me speaking out of hurt, okay? Because I've had to wait a long time a couple times.
Don't spread your hate.
No, you're right. You're absolutely right, James. James and Artel Soren does not endorse any of the dumb things that come out of my mouth. Okay, guys? But enough of me. Let's talk about, uh, when you got back. As soon as you landed, they're like, alright, get back to work. You're going to Origin.
Yeah, yeah. As soon as, as soon as we landed, um, we were, we had a couple of days back and then off to Origins. That was pretty wild. Origins is crazy. I hadn't gone, but I used to live in Columbus, Ohio. So I was like hanging around my old hometown. And that was crazy because Origins happened to be, uh, located the same place that my old anime convention, the anime convention of my youth used to be located.
Oh, yeah.
That was, that was very nostalgic for me.
Did you ever dress up?
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, nice.
I was the president of the anime club. I have to dress up.
Oh, well, then you have to. I didn't know you were president, dude. That's.
You have to set a good example.
I was gonna say you were a senpai, but no, you're a sensei, dude. That's a master.
Anyway, uh, so that was really cool. And, uh, yeah, um, so, oh, we were just there to, honestly, we were invited because of the award ceremony and we were kind of checking the place out, you know, trying to figure out what's new in gaming as always when we're at a convention, meet some people, made some great connections. Hopefully, uh, we get to talk more about that down the road. But, um, the big thing, uh, not to gild the lily or anything, but. Cyberpunk was accepted into the Origins Hall of Fame.
Pretty big. Any Hall of Fame, any Hall of Fame is big.
Yeah, that's, that's the, that's the big award that you wanna win in this industry. I mean, we can't win Spiel de Aris. We're not a board game. So that's, uh, that's the, that's the big thing. And it was, uh, it was really crazy. Uh, I still don't fully believe it and I still haven't fully put two and two together, but it's, it's just very humbling and, um, you know, it's, it's awesome.
Yeah, I mean, obviously it's well deserved, um.
Oh, and so many people over so many years since the dawn of this franchise have put in the work to get here. And it's a win for everybody, uh, including, by the way, cyberpunk fans. So thank everyone that's listening to this.
Yeah, yeah, it's definitely, it cements cyberpunk, the Artel Sorian game, Cyberpunk, as being one of the staples of cyberpunk RPGs. There's so many out there, but this one cements it as like, hey, if you wanna play cyberpunk, this is the one that everybody plays. You know what I mean?
I mean, yeah, fair, fair.
Yeah.
It's just, it's nice to be in such a lofty circle that, of the people that have that, you know? D and D is there, Pathfinder is there, et cetera. It's nice to be in the same breath.
Yeah, it's great, man. It's great. Man, I, I, I'm really proud of all of you guys and all the hard work that you guys have put in. It's awesome. It's great to be a fan of such a cool company and a cool franchise and for you guys to win that award. It was very well deserved. Any accolades you guys get, I'm a hundred percent behind.
Yeah, well, dude, you're kind of biased, so.
I am very much.
Maybe a little bit biased corporate stage.
Yeah, dude, but I'm all in, dude. Alright, I'm all in on this.
Hey, hey, at least you know where you are.
Yeah, exactly. Oh, man. So after Origins, by the way, anything of notes? Any special games that you played? Anything fun? Or was it just?
I spent a lot of money on Dice.
It happens. Look, it happens. It got, they got you that day, huh?
They, they got me pretty bad. They got me pretty bad.
You have some around?
No.
I see you looking at stuff.
No, I don't have any, I don't have anything to get off my chest at the moment. We can, we can do a whole video on, on that. You show them all your fun toys and I'll show them all my fun toys, but that's not here. This is not on Night City Council.
No, Night City Council. No, 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 that's, that's not what it is. So yeah, congratulations to Artel Sorian Games and everything. Well deserved. Let's talk about DLCs, some of the stuff that you guys worked on. Why you won awards is because, uh, because of stuff like this. That's why. And we're behind. We got two DLCs that we are behind on.
Yes, we gotta get catch up.
So the first DLC we're gonna be talking about is Stickball, the sport of the street.
Yeah, it's finally here. Stickball. I've been trying to make this DLC for months, dude.
I know. Um, and, and it's a fun street sport in Cyberpunk Red. There are so many narrative reasons why to have, uh, why you would have it. Uh, there, it's cool to introduce to your players. But why don't you give us the idea of where this came from, Stickball?
Okay, so, um, there are a lot of gangs in Night City. But there is like kind of two tiers of gang in Night City. There's rip your face off gangs and there's not gonna rip your face off gangs. There's a bunch of, I'm not calling A-listers and B-listers, because there's A-list not rip your face off gangs. You know, uh, but there's these incredibly violent gangs and they do not play this. They do not play Stickball. They play different games. They, they win, they win terrible prizes by playing terrible games.
They play Stickball, but it's a grenade involved.
Yeah, yeah.
And you're playing against your friends and they're watching you.
So here's the thing. This is a narrative high point that you can do with those gangs that aren't bozos who are not gonna play this with you, the maelstrom who are not gonna play this with you, et cetera. You know what I mean? They might play it with themselves, but they're not gonna actually use this as a, uh, as it's what it's used on the street for, which is solving conflicts without gunfights. So anyway, um, this gives you a, uh, so if you're a game master and you need a high point for a, uh, a gang fight in between two gangs that, well, they're not necessarily one of the rip your face off ones, like the primetime players, for example. Or the, uh, the Voodoo Boys. If they got, if you got them in your game. Anyway, um, this gives them that. Also, this totally existed in 2020. Uh, in some of the Nomad books, this is a total thing. So I wanted to bring it forward and make it playable. As its own rule set that also integrates with the rule set of Cyberpunk Red, kinda like how Elf finds online integrates with the rule set of Cyberpunk Red.
Yep, and the whole cheating, uh, card game thing. There's, there's all kinds of, you guys use the base mechanics to make a new mechanic, basically.
Yeah, yeah. Um, stuffs, uh, to play on the stuff your players already know and then build on it for an interesting scene. Um, it's one of those DLCs and, you know, I love those, doing those DLCs. That's why I've done so many of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I should slow down. Um, and focus on other DLCs.
You want another award or what, man?
More, more narrative based ones. I don't think there's another word we can get in that area.
We'll make a new one, okay?
Uh, we'll do it for the people, not for the awards, man.
Of course.
Anyway, um, so this, so essentially the cool, another cool way to sell this to you, because this is all too complex for me to explain the rules to you right now, is if you like Blood Bowl. If you like Blood Bowl, this is essentially Cyberpunk Blood Bowl.
Or remember NFL Blitz?
NFL Blitz? There you go.
Yeah, I think NFL Blitz.
So you, it's essentially a playable war game within Cyberpunk, uh, skirmish war game. Uh, with a non, uh, with, you know, interesting scoring mechanisms in it that aren't necessarily kill them all, because that's just normal skirmish war game. Honestly, that's just like the typical combat in Cyberpunk. So this gives a, uh, sort of a, a bookend to put around a scenario to make it sort of playable on table. I will say that, um, it makes a pretty good two-player skirmish war game experience in case you need more things to do when people don't show up to your Cyberpunk game and you only have one guy and you there and it happens, man.
It happens a lot, yeah.
And this is something to pull out of your back pocket and have a roaring good times the week after when, you know, the other people show up and are like, oh, I'm so sorry I missed it. He'd be like, oh my God, we had so much fun.
Yeah.
You missed this awesome thing.
You missed it. We played Stickball and you guys were at home doing what? You know?
Watching the new dinosaur movie on.
You were working overtime, whatever that means.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. You had to pick up your dog at the vet.
Yeah, come on, man. We've heard it all before.
You had a colonoscopy.
Yeah, whatever that even is, okay? Sounds like a good time.
It's not. It involves Pedialyte. Anything that involves Pedialyte is not a good time.
True. You know what? You might be right. It's not a fun time. But you're talking about a game that has like lacrosse elements with like, uh, violent street sports.
Yeah.
It's very much, uh, like pickup basketball. Um, there's, uh, passing and shooting range tables, the mechanics for stealing, mechanics for, um, escalating the game. There's a whole table where like, you know, we're making it interesting, like number one on the table is let's do this without armor. Number two is you can't beat us on our home turf. You know, all these things change the entire aspect of the game.
So those are kind of like, so I don't know if y'all have seen an anime called Air Gear.
I've heard of, I'm sad that I've heard of it and I know what it is. Isn't that the volleyball one?
No.
Okay, then never mind.
No, Air Gear is, is a really cool anime about, about having rocket powered skates and doing sick tricks and 3D animation.
Okay, okay.
Back when that was really revolutionary and very cool.
Oh, was it like during the time of Reboot? Remember that show? Reboot?
No.
No?
I don't think so. I don't think so.
Okay.
But, um, but that's just, I don't know. I, I don't, I slightly remember Reboot. Was that that like a very, very, we're getting off topic.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's, uh, so anyway, it's basically it, the escalation part lets you bring the drama from your campaign into this sub-game. Um, and make it matter more reputationally or have some smack talk happen before a, uh, before a match and, um, it integrates it with the face down system so that, uh, let's say somebody spills a drink on you or something and they're a member of a different gang. You could be like, well, that was an offense and we're gonna take this up on the court. And if you say no, then you kinda suck.
Yeah, you do.
Say no. You, you have to say yes, uh, or, uh, or suffer the consequences to your reputation.
Yeah. You'll be known as the one that said no.
The one that said no and wouldn't, you know, play a ballgame.
Yeah, exactly.
How dare you not play basketball with me? This is a sports anime.
Come on, dude.
Yeah, so all of the traumatic sports anime, bad team, good team stuff can happen in your game.
Yeah.
Anyway, oh, and, uh, the sticks are, uh, are these custom lacrosse sticks that have a magnetic pouch. Um, so you can carry multiple balls at once and do like multi-ball, 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 uh, stuff with them, but also, uh, become electrified when the ball, when any number of the balls get in there, because the balls are also electrified.
Yeah.
So you can, uh, you win, you can, one of the ways you can win is by getting all three of the balls and then just beating the, uh, opposite team senseless until they get knocked out and then putting them all in the goal like, yeah, I did it.
Dude, that's an ultimate flawless victory.
It's just a alternate victory mechanic is you playing the actual game.
That's awesome. Well, uh, Dawn Davis, a concerned mother says, Stickball teaches kids to be violent and brings them together with criminals. We must eliminate our school's lacrosse team immediately at his, as it is a known gateway to Stickball.
Yeah.
Clutching your pearls.
Dawn Davis is back once again. Dawn Davis is, uh, it's, I think that's the fourth Dawn Davis quote in 2045.
She's just a concerned mother, right? She has a lot to be concerned about. The, the dark future is rough.
It's true.
It's true.
It's true.
Oh, man. So yeah, um, what, uh, the first thing that jumps to me with something like this is there is an NPC that's a valuable NPC and the players are looking for that NPC and they hear a rumor that that player is always at the Stickball games, you know, always playing Stickball. That's like their thing, you know what I mean? So that's just another excuse to get your players to go and try to find this person, maybe get engaged in a Stickball game. It gives them a little bit of reputation, a little bit of juice and helps them with the interrogation of the person that they're supposed to get help with. Cause remember snitches and informants, that's, that's something that shouldn't be existing on the street. But you can sweeten the pot, you know, you can earn respect and that's a little bit different.
So I, I will mention one other thing and that's it has a awesome fiction piece in the beginning by a new character that's a member of the Piranhas that gives more lore about the Piranhas. And, uh, it's also, there's a narrative fiction piece in this one that's a continuation of the, uh, Molly Anderson mini storyline going on in the DLC. So it is, it is a required, uh, DLC for, um, what do they call the Marvel movies that have the, they come out in cycles?
Oh, uh, Phase, Phase One.
It is a required reading for Phase, uh, Phase Three, Cyberpunk Red.
Dude, I need to catch up. I didn't know we were at three.
I imagine there's been enough that we could have gotten to the third one by now.
Yeah, that's cool.
And we love focusing on this, on the, uh, street level stuff, uh, for Night City, uh, in these DLCs just because that's a good place to do it. And, uh, we get to give little vignettes about the street, which are really cool and, uh, add color to the world. Uh, anyway.
Yeah.
I think, I think that settles that.
That settles that.
We have more to do, more to talk about the street.
Yeah, because you know, every now and then in a Stickball match, it can be interrupted, uh, when let's say like NCPD shows up or somebody drives through the court in a punk knot.
Ah, yes.
The dreaded punk knot, maximum violence, maximum speed. This is a DLC. Talk about us, talk to, talk about it with us. What is this DLC?
So this is a, this is a Jay Gray original production. Um, Jay Gray was the leading man on this one and this is, this is a beauty of a DLC. Let me tell you, he did a fantastic job. And, uh, so this is bringing more content from 2020 forward. These are punk knots. Uh, if you're a 2020 fan, you know what these are, but I gotta explain what they are for everybody else, because it's kinda weird. Um, I want you to imagine, um, so you know that type of engineering that goblins can do in fantasy where they just weld stuff together and it works? This is like that, but for punks with, um, AV4's engines. So they're strapping a bunch of stuff to like a hover thing and piping it all together and welding it. And it only needs to hold together for long enough for them to smash through an NCPD barricade and cause a bunch of damage.
Yeah.
So this is, this is just a, uh, this is a siege weapon. Um, this is a, uh, a feat of, um, of, what, what is it? It's a feat of, uh, meth engineering, uh, that a meth project completely finished with like a, a blueprint. This is a, uh, it's a, it's just a big rusty pile of cars welded together to a jet engine screaming into your police department. Uh, this is, this is the nightmare of the rookie cop. And, uh, so this is a, I, I'd say this takes the place of a high story point for a, um, Reclaimers style thing or a Reclaimers gang style thing.
Or if you pissed off some nomads.
This is, this is a boss fight for sure.
Yeah.
And, um, or it could be the like end stage of a big heist or siege. Oh, we gotta build this to get through this crazy thing. I think, uh, so this is, this is in hundred percent, this is, you use this and you find a place to put it. It's, uh, it's sort of unabashedly itself. Um, this is gonna be crazy. Any scene that has this in it will be wild. So it's an entirely modular system where you get to build your own punk knot. Based on the stuff you're putting into it. And then there are rules about salvaging the parts you're missing, the salvage person in charge, and then there's the building person in charge. And it's a bunch of people working together. It's a group project to build this thing. And, uh, it, it's only gonna last for a couple of hours. So once you fire up that engine, it's gone. Anyway, so that is, that is, those are the rules there. I believe it has a new ceiling for damage on the combat plow on this, uh, on this buddy. Uh, you can put spikes on the front and get really, this is our, us at our most Mad Max.
Yeah.
And we, we did it before they did it, uh, in 2020, of course, but of course they did it better in Fury Road. Everybody knows that. No need to, no need to harp on that, but we did it first.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, they put it on the.
Cars together is, uh, is, is pretty well understood.
Yeah, I mean, we all, we all could put that together.
Everyone could figure that.
It's like two, seeing two Lego pieces. No one has to tell you that they go together. You know what I mean?
It's true. It's true. Two Lego cars. You're like, what, I put this car in that car to extend the car.
This car is great, but what if we put another car on it?
Yes, every, every planet that's invented cars has also invented stretch limousines.
Yeah, exactly.
It's just the way, it's just the way engineering works.
That's it. And, uh, I mean, from the cover, it's a, it's pretty self-explanatory on what you're gonna be building. This is definitely one of those group projects that you can do within your group. You know, let's say that you guys have a big heist that you have to do and you're like, this is gonna be impossible. How are we gonna break into this facility? And someone says, well, And someone says, well, you know, Artel Sorion did just drop this new DLC for something called a punk knot. Why don't we divert our campaign a little bit? Get all the resources we need. There's step one, step two, step three, put our punk knot together, customize it and then crash it straight into that place. And do the different operations. There's basic driving, ramming, there's maneuvers. And also the death of a punk knot. Why don't you talk about that?
Okay, so um, punk knots die in different ways than other cars do. Um, because they may explode. Um, and those are just the rules around that. John John, can you give us the percentage chance of explosion?
Yeah, so punk knot explodes is one out of six. It's the six on the D six scale. So what do we talk, what is that? Thirty, it's not thirty-three percent, no. What's one out of six?
Twenty-two percent?
Twenty-two.
Am I wrong?
It's one, it's one out of six, guys. It's the six on a D six.
Don't listen to us. It's one out of six.
A one out of six.
Calculator function and do simple division.
What, what do we got?
Well, poor sixteen percent.
There you go.
Sixteen percent.
Sixteen percent chance for you to explode doing, anybody within six meters or three squares on a grid takes damage as if hit by an armor piercing grenade. That's six D six ablating two pieces of your armor, two SP of your armor. So
Good news is that's also everyone that you just crushed into.
Yeah, exactly. So you know, but the bad news the bad news, it's also you and your friends. But you know, in for a pound, in for a penny, right?
That, the same thing, but I'll, I'll say it the other way around.
The right way. Um, you're pounding and that, never mind. All right. So that's the punk knot death table. So I'm assuming when it has zero SDP left, then it's time to roll on this table.
It's time to roll. It's time to figure it out.
Yeah. The best thing that can happen to you is you roll a one, it looks, or no, a roll, a two, engines roar to life. It bucks one last time, hurling at full speed in whatever direction. And it's treated like ramming the punk knot and all parts are destroyed. Okay, so you can, you can divert it when it's gonna blow up.
If you roll that.
Yeah, if you roll a two. Yeah, so there's all kinds of fun stuff. Actually, I like to use this table for any AV.
Yeah, it, I would say maybe the shittiest AV.
The shitty AVs for sure. Yeah, yeah, yeah. The, the, the luxury ones have like, you know, safety.
Control and safety.
Yeah, yeah. They have all kinds of safety stuff, because people fall from the sky all the time in AVs.
These are, these are the uh, these are for the AVs without air conditioning.
Yeah, yeah. We had to take that stuff out of the luxury car to make it a punk knot. So we, we took all those sensors and safety stuff out. Um, so, and then there's uh, part of the mechanic of the punk knot is a time thing. So like, it takes time to like construct uh, all the, obviously it takes time to salvage as well. But the construction time is what takes the most. It's seven days to get the core of the vehicle. Uh, DV fifteen and then all the other stuff that you wanna put on it, that also costs time.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so what's the idea of this whole construction time uh, mechanic?
The idea is uh, we wanted to give a satisfying way to make a modular punk knot creation system. And there's really only two things that go into it, time and materials.
Cool. I like it.
Anyway.
I was gonna say
Simplest way to chop it up.
Yeah, I was gonna say alternatively, you could uh, P, you know, a lot of my players always forget this. I'm like, look, you guys are making money. You can hire people to do stuff. You don't have to go do things all the time.
It, it's true. Uh, this is one of those dangerous jobs that maybe uh, maybe you don't end up hiring the right people to get done.
Yeah, I mean, there's always a risk when you hire people, that's for sure.
And hey, that's part of the adventure, isn't it?
That's right. So maybe your crew's like, alright, we wanna punk knot, but we don't really have time to deal with it, because we gotta go to that Arasaka facility and get some information off a laptop. Alright, why don't you have your little cousin be our runner, get some parts, we'll pay him. You know what I mean?
And it's constructed exclusively by children.
Exactly. Just childlike. Hey, what is it, Generation Red?
Lollipop sticks, start it.
Generation Red, dude, that's what it is, okay?
Ah.
So yeah, there it is. That's the punk knot. I hope you guys like that. Uh, why don't we do some questions? Let's talk about some questions here. We got some questions from the community, uh, johnjohnthewise@gmail.com. That's where you guys could send me your questions. So let's start here with Sebastian Mu who says, how do I introduce previously powerful characters to a game with other starting characters? And do I nerf things? Do I nerf players and NPCs? How do I do it? Thank you, Sebastian.
Um, well, you know, that's a, I mean, oof, hard question. Um, NPCs? No, don't change them. Um, those NPCs should be the same as you saw them the last time. The world doesn't change just because the players do. Um, players? Well, it depends. Um, if there are players, they're like, I wanna play my character from my old camp, from our last campaign, that's really cool. And there are other players that are like, I wanna play something else. I wanna play a new guy this time. Well, those are choices that people made. You should honor those choices as best you can. That means letting the guy from previous play his old guy with all their abilities and all the cool stuff. And letting the guy that said, I wanna play a new guy this time, let him play the new guy. Let him have the experience of being the newbie on the team. Um, the way the math works in Cyberpunk with luck points and all that, um, all of the uh, you know, the fairly high power level of starting characters. Um, he'll still be able to do cool stuff. Uh, and uh, I think that it's more important to uh, you know, honor both of those choices than it is to scale people. Because whenever you start touching somebody's character sheet to scale them, that's like their baby, man. That's their child. Uh, they're more invested in that than they are in your world. Uh, likely, um, or maybe not, I don't know. But uh, in my experience, players really don't like that.
Yeah.
Um, anyway, but it sounds like you're thinking about how to make a great experience for your players, which means you're a good GM. Hey, that's how it is.
Yeah, no, for James is correct in that. So the thing about Cyberpunk is uh, it doesn't matter how powerful you are. There's always going to be something that can defeat you. Um, whether it's, you know, violently, violently in combat or you're, you know, I don't care how in max solo you are, if you're in a hideout and there's thirty goons in there. It doesn't matter. Just the action economy of rolling it rules as written, your character's gonna die. It doesn't matter. You know what I mean? It, it, it would have to be like a lot of crazy rolls to go your way for you to get out of there, which is fun. So I wouldn't worry about trying to nerf things or anything like that. There's always ways to counter everything. I always like to think of the fun factor. Is this character that's powerful, that's playing in the party, is this gonna ruin the fun for everybody else? Or is it, or is there something I can do as a game master to make sure that that doesn't happen? And now, remember, like, you know, you can min-max a solo all you want, give them all the crazy gear that a tech gave them. But when they walk into a building and there's security there, the security gonna be like, whoa, 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 you're, you look like a crazed killer, alright? Unless you know how to really hide it well, the, I don't trust you being in this building. Your friends can come, but you, I don't know about that. You know, stuff like that can happen. I don't mean to tell you to make that player sit out on a session. What I'm doing is giving you an example that the real world is, is, is alive around your players. And if you're walking around looking like you're a mean killer, then people are gonna react to that. And, and that doesn't mean that just because they have a powerful character, that they're just gonna resolve your every problem that you give them.
I, I will say at the flip side of that, because we use that example a lot. Cyberpunk is also the system where after, when that interaction happens, the mean solo guy uses his face down, blows his luck on it and is like, actually, you didn't wanna do that.
Yeah.
And uh, and they're like, they, and they just get riz to death. And you sit down and then let them enter in with all their weapons. So there, there is the, there is the, you wanna have these face downs, but the reaction to these face downs isn't for the players to back off and go, the GM doesn't want me to be in the building with my guns. It's, the GM wants to realistically represent a world that doesn't want me to be in the building with my guns. But I'm just too cool for that to happen.
Which hey, that's fair and square, because what we're talking about is the immersion of the other players. If, if the solo just gets away with everything, then the other players feel like their experience has been diminished.
Yes.
So we just, we just have to make sure that, you know, we keep everything honest.
Right, and sneaking the solo's guns in as the fixer that has all the conceal and reveal object things and doing heist stuff is benefited by having a more realistic world that's meant to be tackled as a puzzle in that way as well.
Yeah, and you know, having that one powerful character, that's a great narrative device too. It's like, how many animes or movies have you seen where the group has that, you know, they have the Hulk. They have the, they have the Hulk. So like, if they ever get into a really bad situation, they know they could unleash that guy. It doesn't ruin the entire movie. It's not like, oh, Hulk's so powerful, the movie sucks now. No, actually, it's used in like a, a great way to illustrate how powerful an enemy is and how great of an ally.
That's a good, that's a good point. They do use the Hulk as a very like bounded narrative tool whenever he's in a movie. I, I've noticed.
Yeah.
And uh, there are like narrative guidelines on when the Hulk is doing these things. And uh, consequences and all that good stuff. You should be putting up your games.
Exactly. And when the Hulk fails, then as an audience, we're like, oh my God, what are we gonna do? If the Hulk fails, what are we gonna do? And that's, that makes your characters feel, the audience feels. And um, I, I don't think you need to change anything. You, it is always good to know the intentions of your players though, you know, if somebody wants to play a really powerful character and they're just like, hey, I just like to have, that's how I have fun. Um, okay, fine, as long as it's not at the expense of all the other players, you know what I mean? And, and they're being considerate, then I don't see a problem with it. Yeah. There it is. Okay.
Oh yeah, have a session, have a session zero.
Yeah.
And, and have a session zero, of course.
Yeah, yeah. So I assumed you already did.
We're just, I, I, high, it was a high level question, so I assumed he already knew.
Yeah, yeah. Sessions zero is extremely important to set up expectations and all that kinda stuff.
Alright, let's hit another one.
Let's do another one. Another one from Sebastian. Uh, how, how to determine how much time a side hustle takes as well as managing installing cyberware and rest at the same time. So how do you juggle uh, going to a clinic, doing your side hustle and resting?
Ah, um, I believe the hustle takes all week. It always takes seven days and it's designed that way so that you can fill in large gaps of time. Um, it's intentionally not designed to fill in short gaps of time. Because then you get like the how do I make money while breathing thing? Where, you know, somebody gets up and they're relaxing and they're actually day trading the whole time, I promise. Uh, you know what I mean? No, it, it, Cyberpunk says you're doing one or the other. Um, if you wanna think of it as, oh, my character is narratively doing this stuff. Um, and my character game mechanic wise is doing this stuff, that's fine. Um, but uh, it's there to balance large gaps of time, short gaps of time and filling short gaps of downtime. That's inherently like the power of some of the character classes, um, the roles. Uh, so I would not change that. Also, you really don't make that much money hustling anyways, so it's always a third best option.
Yeah, it's true.
And the second players come up with a heist all on their own of how to make money, you know, like wait, I know, I don't wanna hustle this week. I've got a great idea. Isn't there a bank on Third Street? That is the biggest, it just, just know when that happens, because that is the, the biggest gift that players can give you as a GM.
Yeah.
Because if it's their idea, they have to be uh, engaged for it, don't they?
Yeah, if it's their idea, then they're basically telling you, this is what we wanna do.
And that's awesome. And I wish more players did that.
Yeah. There's a, there's many ways to get that out of your players too, you know what I mean? That's why I use the life path system too, because it's like, I don't have to guess, like it's in your life path if
I guess, I guess fair. That's a, that's a benefit of getting the, of getting the choose on your life path. Because if they choose on their life path, they kind of are pre-selecting that they want that and then maybe they're more engaged. I like roller choose. It just gives options, but I guess we should be very careful when somebody chooses life path and then chooses specific outcomes.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Um, maybe that's the thing that they really enjoyed about the character and they're like, I've had this idea every time I shower, shower thoughts. The character grew up in a combat zone, you know what I mean? So you can definitely use that. Alright, this is from Ivan. I will not, right, okay, I'll try it. I'll try it. Last name. Uh, I think it's Polish. Dakievich, Dakievish. D A C, Dakievish.
Ish? Okay.
D A C K.
It's not on my screen. I'm, I'm gonna go off of John John's pronunciation.
There's Cs and Zs and Ks and Ws and, and I'm saying
I wish, I wish I was better at pronouncing that type of stuff, pronouncing.
Ivan, write in and tell me how close I am, alright? Let us know. Okay, so
Give us a pronunciation guide, Ivan, please.
This is from uh, martial arts. In the special move section, one seventy-nine, we have Aikido Iron Grip, minus two for the target to escape the grapple.
Mm-hmm.
And Judo Escape Grip, escape grapple by beating a static DV fifteen plus broken arm injury. My question is if A is grappling B with the iron grip and B meets the requirements to execute grab escape, does iron grip count as a different grappling thing? Does grab escape take precedent? Does grab escape DV raise to seventeen from the iron grip penalty? What are you thinking?
I'm thinking this is a lovely question. Give me ten seconds.
Yeah, one seventy-nine.
You know, I didn't intend it this way, but I'm okay with it making the plus two harder to use your thing to break the grapple. Um, so I would say, sounds good.
So grab escape DVs.
Very, it's a very edge case, but iron grip uh, affecting that edge case makes sense. That's the interplay between martial artists, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I would say it's still pretty effing dangerous to try to iron grip somebody you know who can do this move. Um, and if you're willing to live on the edge like that, I see no reason why not to reward you for it.
Yeah, it's true. You're iron gripping someone that knows how to
You're iron gripping someone who knows how to break an arm and get out of an, uh, uh, get out of the grip. So you're you're really white knuckling down onto the danger there.
It is a contest of champions right there, dude.
Yeah, yeah. I, I would say a plus two is not worth your arm. So uh, maybe consider uh, not, but uh,
Yeah.
But hey, if you really need to get it done, give it a shot.
There you go. Uh, alright, we got another, another one from Ivan about the stickball DLC.
Oh man, Ivan is coming through.
Ivan's the chum of the week.
Ivan's show today.
In the description for the stealing action, it says that while wielding a stickball stick, you can steal a ball from an adjacent NPC. Held in their own stickball stick, of course, and any weapon and the skill associated, using any weapon and the skill associated with it. Okay? Uh, could you, for example, give us an example of what that means?
Okay, I'm gonna pull up the stickball DLC. This is a very specific question.
Yeah, cuz there's uh, other parts to it. Uh, you want me to just read the stealing action? I have it right here.
Ah, let me pull it up too.
Okay, no problem.
So this is the steal action?
Yeah.
Okay. As an action while wielding a stickball stick, a player can make a one ROF attack against a target uh, within two M yards, using any weapon and the skill associated with it, posed by the target's athletic skill. That means you can shoot the guy as part of your steal attempt with the pistol in your other hand. That means you can punch the guy um, with the brawling uh, skill. That means uh, yeah, that means anything.
Yeah, so he's saying, I think Ivan assumed you would pistol whip, but you're saying you actually shoot. You can actually shoot.
You can shoot the guy. If your pistol would pick somebody, that's a brawling check. That's not a melee weapon check. Because it's not designed to be a melee weapon. It's designed to be a pistol. Because it's not designed to be a melee weapon. It's designed to be a pistol. Unless your pistol is also a melee weapon.
Gotcha. So you shoot them, there is a, there's a whole section of, uh, stick ball ammo. Uh, sanctioned rubber ammo ammunition, so.
Yes. Oh, there's special rubber. Oh, by the way, there's special rubber ammunition in this that's tech modified to not have the downside of rubber ammo.
There you go. So it's meant for this game, um, so you can use your favorite gun. Shoot your friends and it only hurts a lot.
That's right.
Um, so you can also steal a stick ball with the grab action, uh, but going next, he says, uh. The rule only mentions that you can steal a ball in the adversary's stick ball stick. But doesn't mention what happens if the ball's on. Their by now pretty crispy hand. Does that mean that a handheld ball cannot be stolen?
Uh.
Uh, does the rule say that it has to be in your stick?
Yeah, if you succeed, you may choose to steal one of the balls locked, locked into their stick ball stick into yours. So if it's not. Um, remember, it says you can always steal a ball without using a stick ball stick by using the grab action. So that would be you have to grab a ball in their hand away with your hand.
Got it. So if you want it out of the stick ball stick, you can use your weapon. If you wanna get it out of their hand, you have to use your, the grab action. But when you do so, it electrocutes you. Oh, wait, wait, they can't have it in their hand. It electrocutes them.
Nope.
Doesn't it, it says you suffer three D six damage directly.
That doesn't mean they have to drop it. They can keep doing it.
Oh, well, true. I mean, the, so yeah.
Actually, that's a, that's a thing that you can do.
That's nuts, dude. So you can hold it in your hand, take the damage.
Yeah, you can just electrocute yourself to, to, you know, just take the, the kinda spike it into the goal. If you really need to get past some people.
And no one, and they, it can't be stolen unless some mad lad, mad tomb like you does the grab action.
I mean, alternatively, they can also grab you to stop your movement. Do any number of things.
There it is.
Um. Hit you in the head with their stick ball stick. By the way, you can aim for people's heads. There's no reason you can't use the, the aim for, uh. Head action with any of this stuff. So enjoy hitting people with the backside of head. Um, with a lacrosse stick, kinda like the Thatcher lacrosse team. You know who you are.
There you go. We, we got some rivalries going on here. All right.
High school lacrosse is coming back to them. They'll get it.
Yeah, that, it'll, it'll make its rounds.
The rounds.
Yeah. All right, that's about it, Tumes. Thank you all for writing in. Uh, I, we really, really do appreciate all the love and support that we get from the community. Once again, we apologize for the delay in getting you this episode, but a man's got a vacation, you know?
Uh, I'm, I'm actually really excited to, uh. The next couple ones, we got Gen Con coming up.
Yes.
We're gonna have really exciting things to talk about after Gen Con, man.
We are all waiting with bated breath.
Well, I'm excited to talk about them here, so people should come back for the next episode.
Yeah.
Or the one after. I don't remember when Gen Con is. I just know it's really soon and we're. We are working real hard at the office.
Yep, yep. I know you guys are always working hard. Uh, Combat Zone by Monster Fight Club should be coming out pretty soon too.
Rock on.
I'm not sure if it'll come out before Gen Con, but we're all hoping it does. Uh, they said it, when is Gen Con again?
Why you can do this to me? Why you do this to me, man? I'm on a deadline. Don't remind me how many days I have left.
August third. Okay, so August third, hopefully. Um, hopefully I get my advanced copy of, uh. Combat Zone before August third and then, uh, hopefully everybody gets it before August third, but I think I might get my advanced copy by then. And then I'll talk to you Tumes about it, so stay tuned to the channel.
Well then, next episode, we'll definitely have Gen Con things to talk about.
That is correct. We'll talk about games. I wanna hear all about it. I wanna hear all about the things that happened there. And then of course, we'll talk about the amazing announcement that I'm sure you guys are gonna drop.
On, we got, we got, we're gonna have some announcements. They're gonna be, everybody's gonna love them.
We know, we know. The people know how this works.
We're gonna love them. Well, we'll figure out how the people feel about it. A little excited for that, by the way.
Usually correlates, you know?
Hopefully.
Yeah, just look at elf lines. Everybody loves that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Loves it.
That's right.
If you don't like elf lines, co- comment on this video.
Yeah. Yeah, if you don't like elf lines, make sure you let us know in the comment.
Make sure you let me know so that I can make it.
Yeah, how many of you are the, all two of you?
Uh, anyone to do that will have elves named after them.
That's great. That's great, actually. A raid, a dungeon raid.
Anyway, um.
Oh, man.
Uh, it's good to, it's good to be back.
Yeah, it's good. Good to have you back. I missed you, buddy. It's good to see you, uh. Other than that, I believe Night City Council is adjourned. We'll see you guys on the next one.
See you then.
Bye.
Bye, buddy.